Call the meeting to order. Please rise and salute the flag.
I, electorallegiance, in the right of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, clear and just.
Alright. Give me my glasses. Alright. Acceptance of minutes for the last meeting, please. Move to accept. Second. On the discussion. Hearing that, all is in favor. Aye. Opposed?
Abstain.
I didn't get to it yet.
Oh, never mind.
Opposed? Abstain. You're safe, okay, good. Public input. Fifteen minutes or less of dead quiet. Shall we move on? Abby, student representative, report, please.
Yes, well, it's crazy that we already are past quarter one, we're on to quarter two, and we have a ton of things going on, so it was really hard to choose the top things. But, um, winter sports are now in full swing, the first games begin this week. And last meeting, I mentioned how we were doing the Thanksgiving food basket drive, and our goal was to get thirty baskets that we send out. And we completely exceeded that, and we made fifty Thanksgiving baskets that were given out to, um, our school communities, and we still have leftover food that we need to donate, so that was a huge success. Um, a really interesting thing was last Thursday, the junior senior honors program had the honor of listening to, um, retired Major General Susan DeJardins, and she was a member of the first COED class to graduate from the Air Force, so she talked to them about ethics and leadership. Um, on November twenty-ninth, the hospitality program in the tech center began its task talk lectures for, um, the high and middle school about hospitality and tourism for our students that are interested in that, so that'll be ongoing. Chef Bordeaux and the culinary arts did a really cool thing where they recorded eleven videos for the WMUR's Cook's Corner, so those will be produced and showed in the summer. And, um, the agricultural science students are working with, um, the KRMAS science teachers and doing joint units. They did one previously on demonstrating the use of machines relating to a physical science, and now they're, um, ongoing with that, and they're gonna do a joint unit on heat, so that's really cool. And coming up this week and next week, the National Honor Society are going to Mountain View Nursing Home and Sugar Hill to play bingo, sing carols, um, with them. So there's a whole bunch going on, but that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Abby. Superintendent's report.
Well, it's great to be out here in Osiphe, and it's great to see so many teacher faces here. Um, I know that Beth generally has students, and I'm, I'm thinking that maybe they're kindergarten students tonight, which we always, always enjoy, so Beth.
Welcome, and welcome to everybody that's here. Um, it's kind of become a tradition that the kindergarten, um, performs at the school board meeting. Usually it's at, uh, Halloween, but you shook us up this year with, uh, it being December, but they're one step ahead of you. Ryan Stanley is the new assistant principal, and he sends his regrets, his, uh, dog had emergency surgery this afternoon, so I told him to go. So the kindergarten's coming.
Do you wanna do a little dance in the meantime, as on?
No, I don't think I could do a dance right now, but, uh, the year's going well. Teachers are, uh, doing very well with the corps and the students. Are they coming? I just didn't wanna take up any of their time. And the students are doing very well in the classes. Here they come.
Five little snowmen standing in a row, each wore a hat and a big red bow. Out came the sun and it shone all day, and one little snowman melted away. Four little snowmen standing in a row, each wore a hat and a big red bow. Out came the sun and it shone all day, and one little snowman melted away. Three little snowmen standing in a row, each wore a hat and a big red bow. Out came the sun and it shone all day, and one little snowman melted away. Two little snowmen standing in a row, each wore a hat and a big red bow. Out came the sun and it shone all day, and one little snowman melted away. One little snowman standing in a row, each wore a hat and a big red bow. Out came the sun and it shone all day, and one little snowman melted away.
Thank you, Beth, that sounds very nice. Thank you. This is what they made. See, I told you I'd be disappointed, you don't have a, you don't have a pumpkin, you have some. Just hold me.
Ornament.
Ornament.
This is an ornament on my tree.
Yeah.
It's great.
So thank you.
Really, really great.
Thank you, Beth.
Thank you, Beth, there's no better way than to start a meeting with kids. Yeah, wonderful. Well, folks from the, uh, middle high schools that are here, you see what now you have to look forward to, right? Thank you, Beth. Alright, the next item is field trip. We have a baseball field trip, this is a field trip that has been an annual field trip for quite some time. Um, looks like it has plenty of chaperones. They have raised money in order to do this, um, and I'm trying to think what else to tell you. Certainly a field trip that the kids have really enjoyed, and has always been very successful.
I'll move, we approve the field trip for the, uh, baseball trip to Florida.
Second. Motion, second, we're heading to discussion there. Hearing that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Chase and Adam.
Great. Um, the next item is the preliminary budget presentation, and I'm wondering if we should move this screen, can you, can you all see the screen the way that is, or no?
We will, we will make it bigger.
Yeah.
No.
But that...
If we set it behind the table here, maybe? Yeah, I think if, maybe if we put it behind the table, then you can look on it straight on.
While we're moving this, I just noticed Mrs. Giles put up all these art projects today, tonight.
Thank you, Mrs. Giles. Now, if we do that, folks over on this side of the room aren't gonna be able to see it, right?
Oh, there.
That's good.
Alright. Can we move it, like, right in the middle?
I'm wondering, I don't know if there's a way to do it so everybody can see it. Excuse me. So you might have to move it.
We have a clicker. Do we have a, do we have a clicker thing? You wanna flip this, I think the second switch in.
Okay, um, good evening, thank you for being here. Uh, it is a tradition for us to, uh, discuss the preliminary budget in December. This year is a little different because we do not have all the figures we usually have at this time. The teachers' collective bargaining agreement is still under discussion. Our teachers are critical to the success of our students. They work hard and are very committed to the students' aim in the community. We have some of the finest teachers in the state, we know it and we appreciate it. We are still working on coming to an agreement that is acceptable to the teachers and that we believe our taxpayers will also support. We are optimistic we will reach an agreement later this month. Yeah, let's see. Sure.
Maybe just where, where we're positioned to. If not, I'll stand and focus. No, that's weird. See if it's in all the way. Now, if I stand over here, can you still see it? Pardon? Yeah, I can do that. There we go.
Preparation of the budget each year is done after careful planning and consideration of the short and long-term needs of the district, with students always at the heart of the decision-making. The dollars, uh, in the budget reflect the district's goals and services provided. As part of the budget deliberation, we also keep the interests of the taxpayers front and center. We know that it is important to bring forward a budget to the voters that is fiscally responsible in order to keep the great support, uh, the district has had from our communities over the years. As we prepare the budget this year, these areas were considered priorities. Each year, school administrators bring forth recommendations in order to assure that we continue to provide our students with a quality education, uh, that will, that will prepare them well for the future. These recommendations are discussed and prioritized since not all recommendations can always be granted. Focus is on assuring the students are receiving a quality education and that their individual needs are being met. This year, we have been discussing two collective bargaining agreements that are ending in two thousand and eighteen. The Governor Wentworth Support Staff Association and the Governor Wentworth Education Association agreements. Coming to agreements that are acceptable to all is a priority. Economic conditions are also part of the equation. The finance committee considers the factors affecting our citizens, such as rate of unemployment, the Consumer Price Index, and the rate of inflation. It is a balancing act to bring forward a budget that meets the needs of children and considers the taxpayers' ability to pay. Staying ahead of the wear and tear on our buildings and grounds is also important. Taking care of necessary maintenance and repairs has been a priority, so we are not being penny-wise and pound-foolish, as the saying goes. We wanna make sure our buildings are protected, uh, are protected so the taxpayers don't have high costs down the road, and of course, we wanna maintain a safe and healthy environment for students and teachers. Enrollment. District, district enrollment overall is down this year. Some schools, Effingham, for example, uh, we have quite a few more students. In Osiphe and Tufton Borough Schools, by contrast, enrollment is lower. Enrollment in each school has varied significantly from year to year. This makes planning difficult, however, our schools have shared or transferred teachers to balance the staffing in each school as the enrollments go up and down. Declining enrollment is an issue across the majority of the state. We anticipated the declining enrollments in our area, and rather than waiting for the shoe to drop, we have worked with the administration on staffing. Our class sizes have stayed at or below state averages, and staffing is at a level where students' individual education plans can be properly implemented. However, when the opportunity presented itself to reallocate staff or to reduce positions through attrition, uh, in a school with declining enrollment, we have done that. As a result, we are in a better financial position than other districts that are now facing the potential of large-scale staffing. Over the past several years, the board has developed ways to offset cost increases and the downshifting costs by the state to the local districts. The additional students from Middleton have been an asset to our student body and a benefit to our revenue, which helps offset the tax rate. The services the GWRSD, uh, SAU office provides to Middleton also helps. We may also remember the district implemented an energy performance contract a few years ago. This was another way to save money in order to prevent budget and/or staff cuts and to take care of some of our most critical infrastructure issues. This is a quick snapshot of the major budget categories and the status of each. The total budget increase without the teacher's contract is two point nine one percent. Health insurance, again this year, is the largest increase in the budget at nine hundred sixty-three thousand four hundred and fifty-three dollars. As you look further, you will see to the extent we are able to offset the increases by reductions in other areas. The wages reflect a twenty percent increase in a special education teacher for Effingham in order to implement individual education plans. A fifty percent increase in the library media specialist position from half-time to full-time, and the elimination of a half-time library media aid position, both in Tufton Borough. Couple of years ago, we reconfigured our computer networking classes and only partially filled the teaching position. This year, due to the number of students who are requesting this class, we are recommending that the equivalent of one class be added to the schedule at the Lakes Region Technology Center. The state has warned the district that we are not likely to receive the federal dollars we have received in the past for our Title I reading programs in Osiphe and Effingham. We feel that eliminating the program will put the students who are currently receiving these services at a disadvantage. In order to maintain the program, the equivalent of one full-time position to be shared by the two schools is included in the budget. And due to the number of students with special education needs at Carpenter School, a full-time special education teacher for the school has been requested. However, rather than adding a position to the budget, we are going to ask the administration to look at reallocating a, an existing position. Professional services include the cost of the New England Association of Schools and Colleges accreditation process a high school undergoes every ten years in order to maintain accreditation. This accounts for the majority of the increase. There is also a small increase in funds for the services required for students with disabilities. Grant funds that have been used to provide those services in the past are no longer available. The increase in the athletic line is due to a rate increase for officiating. Several, several category, categories have been reduced. Tuition, travel, utilities, transportation fuel, supplies, software, and furniture replacement. We are only recommending what is necessary based on projections. And I want you to note while it's up on the screen, all of these items that are below the, the staffing line, uh, the entire increase is estimated at two thousand six hundred and six dollars, uh, which is pretty minimal, if we're looking at a one-point-three million-dollar increase overall. And the debt service. In the past few years, we have retired the Osiphe, Effingham, and New Durham bonds. Our debt payment schedule shows decrease in principal and a rise in interest for a total decrease of point oh-one percent, or two hundred and thirty-two dollars. Each year, we have presented a capital improvement warrant article in order to provide a safe and healthy environment for our students and staff, and also to protect our assets. For several years prior to the Kingswood project, the capital improvement warrant article was two hundred thousand dollars. It was reduced during the project and for a few years after. In two thousand and fifteen, it returned to two hundred thousand dollars. Since the beginning of our energy conservation project, we have again been able to keep the warrant article at one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We know, given the age of some of our buildings, that we will, we will need to increase this in the future. This year, due to other more pressing priorities affecting the budget, we are recommending that the article remain at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Each year, we have also presented a turf capital reserve warrant article. Our beautiful fields have a light, beautiful athletic fields have a life expectancy of approximately twelve years at a cost of between seven hundred and seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to replace. The capital reserve was established to avoid getting hit with this large expense of turf replacement all at once. This is a predictable expense and a cost which is more reasonable for taxpayers to manage over time. The finance, finance committee is once again proposing to fund the account with money from the unreserved fund balance, not to exceed sixty thousand dollars. We would like to stay on schedule and have the money available when the replacement is needed. The support staff GWSSA agreement, uh, is an extension of the current contract. It maintains the current benefits with a salary increase of one percent. We are appreciative of our support staff. They provide our students and faculty with important assistance, and some of our, and they are some of our hardest-working employees. They are critical to the operation of our schools. We feel that the agreement is very reasonable and does not have a large impact on the increasing budget. The increase is less than two one-hundredth of a percent of the total budget. The total impact of the warrant articles will be available once, uh, once there is an agreement with the teachers. In the revenue portion of the budget, an increase is something we like to see because the revenues are received, we receive offset taxes. The state portion of revenue is down, unfortunately. Once again, we are experiencing the state downshifting costs to the local districts. We are beginning to see the impact of the elimination of the four percent per year distribution for stabilization money the state has distributed to districts in the past. As we make progress paying off the bond for the Kingswood project, the amount of building aid also decreases. The good news is our local revenue has increased by two point oh-one percent. RSA forty colon, semi-colon thirteen, the official ballot law, also known as SB two, determines what is to be included as part of a default budget. The default budget contains the appropriations in the operating budget authorized for the previous year, reduced and/or increased by obligations mandated by law or previously incurred, such as debt service or contracts. One-time expenditures are not included in a default budget. The purpose of presenting a default budget is to give the voters an understanding of what the budget would look like should the proposed operating budget be voted down. The variance between the default budget and the proposed budget as it stands now is less than one-third of one percent, or one hundred sixty-three thousand six hundred and eighty-three dollars. And these are the important dates to remember. January eighth, school board meeting will be the final adoption of the, uh, budget, so the budget hearing. Uh, January ninth, the last day for collective bargaining. January ninth is also the last day for petition warrant articles. The twenty-ninth is the last date to post the warrant budget, the default budget, and February third is the liberty session at ten, ten AM. And January, January fourth to February second.
It's only a week.
It's only a week. The filing dates for district offices and open seats this year, the member-at-large, Tim Eldridge, New Durham, Julia Cardinal, and the Tufton Borough C, which is my seat. And that is the preliminary budget presentation. Any, uh, any questions, be happy to try to ask them. Again, the numbers aren't quite complete yet, but hopefully we'll have that done within a few weeks. Oh, it's just me, it's just me now. Kim again. School Board Association, Jack.
NHIAA School Board Association, we met last week, and really, the only thing that I have to report is I was officially nominated to be the new representative for NHIAA, so I met with the NHIAA staff last Friday, and I'll be attending their meeting in January to take over, because I'm scared I'm retired. And right now, that's it.
Thank you, Jack. Chairman's report. Well, I only have one thing to say. Most everybody knows Megan Cross had a baby, and we sent a letter of congratulations to her. Well, that's next month. See, Trish, thanks, Mogens.
Do you want to tell us?
Mrs. MD had a baby girl.
Eleanor. Eleanor Bell Drapch. However you say that, listen.
Just we happen to have Megan and we're here at the same time, that's pretty cool. I don't think that's happened in all the time I've been on this. Okay, committee reports. Stacy.
Academic Affairs met earlier this evening, and we are bringing forth some policies for first reading. You'll recall earlier, earlier this fall, now we're into winter, this fall, we approved, struck and approved the new policies regarding electronic communications for staff. So now, we're kind of coming forward with the same set regarding students. So what we're looking to do is strike EGAE, EGAR, EGA, and EGAAR, and replace them with Student Electronic Communications would be the policy, and then the RIC would be Internet Acceptable Use Agreement. And I will just note some changes that came out of our meeting. On the JG, excuse me, JGAR, we added to the title, just to keep it consistent with and make it clear if it was pulled out, we added after, at the end, for students. So instead of being Governor Wentworth Regional School District Internet Acceptable Use Agreement, it's Internet Acceptable Use Agreement for Students. And then, at the bottom, under the user guidelines on that page, under number four, all communication information accessible via the network, it says should be assumed private property. That should actually be, should not be assumed private property. So if something's created at school, it's really the school district's property, not the individual's property. I think that about covers the changes we made tonight. So we'll be back next month for second read and approval, unless anyone has any input tonight or between now and then, certainly get it to Heather. We continued our discussion on homework, and so many teachers here, thank you. Heather, on our behalf, we're looking at the homework policy and how we can make it better for our students, for our staff, for our district. So we saw teacher input, and you guys all gave a lot of great and varied input, and it's taking us a while to get through it all because there was so much input. But stay tuned as the year unfolds, because we'll be looking to come out with some suggestion revisions. That's all I have at this time.
Thank you, Stacy. Billy Main, attorney.
We met briefly this evening to discuss some ongoing maintenance issues, both regarding water and roof issues. We're getting some education on how to, shall we say, temporarily maintain our roofs until we can get better dollar figures and perhaps go to the voters, not this year, but next year, for some additional monies to cover the roof's issue. They're getting older. We're patching them, and that's what we're talking about tonight. It's just going to cost a lot of money, and we're trying to figure out the most cost-effective way to do it. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Ernie. Jack, finance.
I've said enough, thank you.
Public relations, Julian. Jack, human resources.
As I mentioned before, hopefully, we'll have an agreement sometime later this month with the teachers. That's all I have for human resources at this point.
Thank you very much. Advanced planning. All right, it's December. Look at the calendar at the bottom of the page. If you don't have one, go ahead and pick it up. It probably only lists about a third of what we've got to have going on, so pay attention. I'm sure one of the kids will have, the guy will say, "My concert's on," the most convenient night possible. Okay, that done, let's move on to public input for 15 minutes. Or not? Yes, please.
I just want to thank all my colleagues for showing up tonight. It was a great presentation from Mr. Woodmer about the temporary budget or preliminary budget. So we're here tonight to support our negotiating team and the school board in a respectful manner so that ultimately, a reasonable agreement which benefits our students, our teachers, and our families can be reached later on this month. You are fair-minded people, and we are hopeful you view our attendance tonight in the spirit in which it is intended. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? That dreaded moment of quiet. Okay, then, let's go to closing comments by board. Wendy, you go first. I'm going to bail Abby out on this one.
Okay. Thank you again, Beth, for having us here. Osiphe, it's always good. I just forget how tiny they are. They're so sweet, but thank you.
Yes, I, thank you, Beth. Thank you. And thank you all for being here tonight. It's great to see you all. And the kids, again, were just adorable. Thank you.
Thanks, Beth. I'd love to come to OCS and see all the kids, and I love the kindergartners. And I think there were kindergartners last year, too, and I just love those little guys. It's fun to see.
Thank you, Beth. The students are wonderful, as always. I had an opportunity to go see the Addams Family play. I don't know if anyone else did. But it was absolutely fabulous. The production, the choreography, the sets, it was a really good time, so kudos to the Arts Department.
Thank you, Beth. Thank you all for attending. And thank you, Abby. You always bring forward things we wouldn't know about otherwise. I love that idea that the Ag Department and the Science are coming together to kind of cross-teach, so keep bringing forward stuff like that. And happy, Merry Christmas to everyone.
Thank you, Beth. Wonderful to be here. Nice short commute going home, that's good. Staff, thank you for being here. That's wonderful as well. And, you know, as like Stacy had mentioned, it's great to hear that so many baskets were put together for the Thanksgiving meals. That was wonderful. And Jack, and the whole finance committee, well job on getting the preliminary budget together.
Thank you, Beth. The students, obviously, I think that's a highlight of any school board meeting, is seeing the students perform whatever they do. Sometimes they test us, too, which could be a little bit of a challenge. And thank you, staff, for being here. I really do appreciate you coming out tonight, listening to the presentation. Hopefully, better things, better days are coming down the road, and we'll keep working on that. And thank you for bringing up the Addams Family, because I took my whole family to see that, and it was spectacular. My grandson had a blast, and he didn't really know the Addams Family, but he do live at the end of the plate. And they did absolutely a great job, so it was terrific. Thank you.
It's great to see everybody, and I've gotten a chance to see some of the babies get a little bigger tonight, so that's been really nice, too. But thank you all for being here, and thank you for sitting, too, though, with that long presentation. I'm reminded, Abby, of what a giving community we have. The students are giving, the teachers are giving, and likewise, I think the community gives back, so it's great to be a part of a community like this one. And Addams Family, I went to see it as well, and it's just, you know, I hope some of you had a chance to see it because it was just fantastic. We also had an elementary robotics team that made it to the finals on Sunday. I don't know how that turned out, so if any of you know, does anybody know?
We don't have the final score, but the children did wonderfully, and they made us all proud, and they had great fun. And they learned a lot. So it was wonderful, but thank you.
And then finally, happy holidays to everybody, because I probably won't see you, or all of you at least, until after the holidays, so have a great holiday and great vacation.
It's going to be an echo chamber. The Addams Family, one hour and 45 minutes production. I think it involved literally hundreds of students. I don't know how Scott easily does it, but he pulls all of this together, and they put on these phenomenal productions. So if you see any in the future, please come out, because they're a major effort on part of the students, the administration, and a lot of people in the community also support this effort. I want to mention that, Jack, congratulations on the NHIAA. That's what you need, more work.
Just another meeting to go through, yes.
And for the teachers, you know, I see you when we have the newcomers orientation. I see you when you retire. And I don't see you very much in between, so thank you for coming out tonight. It's a wonderful opportunity to at least get a quick glimpse of all the hard-working people that I never get to see their work on a day-to-day basis, but I appreciate it because our students are being very successful, and that's what it's all about. Abby, 50-plus baskets, incredible. Awesome. Thank you very much. That's all I have.
Well, how do I follow all that? It's great to be here, Beth. It's great to see everybody, and I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Osiphe. The kindergartners were so cute. I love that. And the Addams Family, yes, that was so awesome, and I know they're already working on their spring production, so they're hard at work, always. And happy holidays. Dan.
Well, I get stuck with the last word. Merry Christmas and 20 shopping days left. Jack. We need to private. We're not public, Jack.
I'll make a motion, go into non-public, into RSA 91, paragraph A, semi-colon, three, paragraph two. RSA 91A, paragraph two, semi-colon.
Second. You never blow that. I have a motion, say, we're not public. Wendy. Bridgette. Anne, Stacy. Yes, yes, Ernie. Yes, we're not public.